Is the last meeting, the last strategic planning committee meeting of the year. So I welcome everyone. Thank you for everyone being here for your participation. I just want to say last week we finished our first equity training meeting as a body, the Planning Commission. And we started and we had great conversation led by Bynum Walter. So thank you again so much for that and the diversity and equity division of the city of Raleigh. And it's helped to give us greater insight on how we view planning, how we view equity, and how we view each other in our approaches. So I think it's a wonderful conversation. I look forward to continuing these talks and these works. So I just wanted to say that. So thank you, everyone. I understand that we have public comments. I would like to open with that, please, for those who are present and wanted to speak today.
First up, we have Mr. Jim Anthony.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to address you all, however briefly. Some of you might know that over the course of the last couple of years, there's been significant actions taken to address some deficiencies in the U D O in Durham that have been specifically targeting the expansion of affordable housing and housing choices. We played a significant role in that, I say myself and some other folks, that I intend to try to engage with you all in the Planning Commission to do similar, undertake similar efforts within Raleigh. And without getting into the specifics of what those things are, I guess we could mention the expanding housing choices, legislation that was undertaken and approved in Durham, and then more recently, some other nitpicking issues in the code that we addressed and got approved in early, I guess it was in November. So I just wanted to introduce myself and say that you'll be seeing more of me in '22. Aaron Lubek has been helpful to me and will be helpful going forward as we try to address these things in both cities really simultaneously. There's still a lot of work to be done in the Durham code, and there's quite a bit of work to be done in the Raleigh code. But that was really my purpose to be here today and just introduce myself and that this effort will be coming before you shortly. And I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Well, doesn't seem that there are any questions to be had, but I thank you, Mr. Anthony, for coming. And I look forward to hearing from you in the future. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
That is the only person who has indicated that they are open to speak at this time.
Okay. Well, thanks. It's Jennifer.
I just wanted to make a comment. It's really nice to have a developer come on and speak to providing affordable housing and plan for that. So that's just really nice to hear. So thank you.
And I'm sorry, Commissioner Lattman. I'm sorry, we're formal today. Okay. All right. Ms. Walter, can you please, we can get to our agenda now. Thank you. Sure. I'm actually going to turn the meeting over to Ira. He and Carmen Quan is hosting the meeting today for us, have done great work to put us, make content for us and lead the conversation. So Ira, take it away.
I apologize, Ira. Thank you.
Oh, that's, that's very good. Good morning, everybody. All right, so Chairperson Winter has asked or set the agenda for this meeting and next meeting to talk about equity issues. So specifically for this meeting, asking us questions about the role of this committee, what is meant by equity and equitable development, and what the Planning Commission can do to influence it. So that's what we're going to talk about today. These slides seem a little lengthy. That's mostly just for your benefit. So they are in the backup in board docs for reference. There's a couple links in there. And some wordier slides that you should not be afraid that I'm going to read verbatim. So for starters, you know, question number one, what is the role of the committee? I think the first stop is the Planning Commission bylaws, which define what all the subcommittees are supposed to do. So generally, the purpose of the subcommittee is for more detailed discussion. And it does have a little bit fairly brief mission statement sort of for each of the four subcommittees established in the bylaws. The Strategic Planning Subcommittee, the definition is the vaguest. So intended to review policy related to long-range growth in the city. That can mean all sorts of stuff. So it has a lot to do with, I think, the commissions and commission members' idea of what those issues might be. The other four committees are a little bit more well-defined. So the parallel question then is, is how do items get to the committee? I think has a lot to do with what the committee thinks its role is. It's pretty simple, you know, require a formal motion from a commission member and the Planning Commission to refer something to the committee, a vote. And then the chair has the discretion over accepting items. So hopefully not never too much of a surprise. Or, you know, there can be work done to make sure the committee is interested in talking about a topic, but would start with an action from the commission to refer something to you. So to give you some examples, I went through and looked at the agenda items from the past five years of the committee. So I will also say now that the Strategic Planning Committee has met sporadically, especially compared to the other ones. So you all know Planning Committee, the whole meets once a month. You know, for the most part, sometimes a lot more in recent memory, but once a month, pretty regularly. Tech change committee, generally there's a tech change at some point in that process. So does meet pretty often. The two that are a little bit more sporadic are strategic planning and transportation. And these are the types of things from the past five years that were talked about. So affordable housing zoning conditions was most recently, early in 2020. Under then Chairperson Bob Geary, started that discussion. We've gone over the land capacity analysis a couple times. That's an analysis that city staff prepares and refreshes periodically. There was a master plan that some items from that were brought before the committee. There were a couple of particularly contentious, I think, rezoning cases four years ago. And then there was quite a lengthy discussion about urban frontages and build twos. And then the last thing is the omnibus amendment to the comprehensive plan. So we haven't done this for five years, but we are preparing to bring one of those forward. I think that'll probably go to community of the whole, but I don't think that's been referred necessarily at this point. But sort of sneak peek for more work for you coming up. So in this committee met in January, February, we had scheduled the meeting for March, which was canceled. And at the time, there were three items pending on your agenda. So the first was discussed a couple times, affordable housing zoning conditions. So these are following a change to the U D O to better allow us to accept voluntary zoning conditions from applicants. And the committee at that time was thinking about guidance for the Planning Commission on how to evaluate those. And then two other topics of interest were about access to businesses during construction. And then this was also shortly following, there were three pretty substantial rezoning requests in the Depot District, two-story requests. So the commission was interested in revisiting some of the policies for development in the Depot District. So again, those second two haven't up and discussed to date. So that's the end of question one. I think the bottom line is, you know, the role can depend a lot on what the commission and the committee interprets as what the issue is affecting the long-range development of the city happen to be. So you can see the variety that have been discussed in recent past. The second question was what we mean by equity and equitable development. So for, I have a couple of different definitions of that from various sources. This first one is, so the city of Raleigh released an equity statement for the city as an organization this past June, shortly following the establishment of the Office of Equity and Inclusion. Again, I'm not going to read it, but pretty focused on racial equity, so saying, recognizing that race is a primary predictor of outcomes, and saying that we will prioritize dismantling policies and systems that have created inequities. And then it's on two slides. So again, just the commitment of the city about life outcomes and quality of life for everyone. The most recent, from the planning department, a little bit more related specifically to development, the most recent statement about equity is, I think, in the Equitable Development Around Transit Guidebook. So you've started your review on that. And again, this is specifically transit-oriented. So not just development in general, but a specific type. But I think has some, gives you a pretty good idea of where our thinking is at, at least in the material that we're presenting. So it specifically talks about reversing displacement and ensuring Raleigh is open to current and future residents. And then elsewhere in the guidebook, talks about, again, avoiding displacement of current residents and benefiting everyone in the city. In the comprehensive plan itself, so the EDAT is from this year. So a 2020 document, the comprehensive plan now adopted in 2009, so even a couple years before that, has six vision themes that we cite when we do our staff review, staff analysis for rezoning requests. And there are some general themes of equity in the language of those. But I'll say there is no specific reference or mention of racial equity in particular. And the one vision theme there, the first one that actually has equity in the name, I think, or I would say is not related to racial equity really at all. So it's really economic prosperity and economic equity. It talks about job, access to jobs, access to training. So really focusing on economic is the important word in that particular vision theme. So equity, the word equity is mentioned here and there throughout the comprehensive plan, generally in terms of access to services and facilities. So like equitable access to parks or community centers, that type of thing. But there isn't really any sort of, any strong focus or focus at all on racial equity or racial equity issues. So we recognize that. When we did, so the comprehensive plan is updated in 2009, included a policy to review the plan every five years. That five-year update itself took five years. So it was about 10 years later when we got it finally updated, the sort of the thorough update of the entire book. And as part of that, we changed that policy so we wouldn't have to do that again in that way. And instead have a policy to update the plan every one or two years, focusing on a specific theme. So it's now, you know, we're starting the second year. The update, capital U, update was adopted in fall of 2019. So our, the plan is the first, this first thematic update, as we call them, is going to be a focus on equity. So we're, you know, in the early stages of planning that. It's going to be, you know, I think a lot of you were involved even before the review of the update and all of the outreach that we did, which was many years of effort. I don't, hoping to avoid taking another four years of outreach to do these types of things. But, you know, would be of that style, which does take quite a bit of planning on our part. So we are actively working on a project plan for that. And then, you know, personally, as planners who are basically all of your staff, I think all the planners on the call are A I T P certified. The American Institute of Certified Planners has an ethics code that we all follow that I wanted to share. So this, I think, this current version of the ethics code is adopted in 2005, but the idea is from the beginning. And talks about the aspirational principles of planners, which is serving the public interest and welfare of all people. And particularly, you know, in the first section, has a clause about social justice and promoting racial and economic integration. So I just wanted to point this out that apart from the city, I think all the planners on the call take the ethics code and the ideals of the profession pretty seriously. So this is at least where the staff that you interact with the most is coming from. And then I just have a couple links in there. So the A P A, which is our group for planners, has a couple of recent publications. So one was about a report called Sustaining Places about comprehensive plans. And that had a lot of different topics about best practices in comprehensive plans, but equity was among them. And then more recently was an equity policy guide released last year, I think. And the A P A website in general has lots of, there's a equity task force or an equity group that's been putting out a lot of videos and other things to try and help planners, you know, think about these issues. And then finally, I sort of similar answer to what is the role of the strategic plan? Is that a lot of this, I think, is going to depend on what the commissioners, how that you would define equity and equitable development. So we had a, you know, the first step of that was actually talking about these things out loud to each other. So that happened last week, went through some questions led by Bynum about race and what current events and what we see in Raleigh and nationwide. So I think those conversations to me and we, I was the planning and development department staff has gone through similar exercise to you all, also led by Bynum and Letitia and others of our Gare cohort, which we're lucky and planning to have quite a few members in the Gare cohort. And I've always found them to be surprisingly constructive and helpful. And I hope you all did too. And I think a lot of what you used to talk about, I think, would be great. Sort of think back on that and what the shared values of the commission are. And then finally, a question of how Planning Commission can influence equity and equitable development. So from a nuts and bolts perspective, the Unified Development Ordinance gives you review authority over two types of things. The first is policy, so that's the comprehensive plan. So whenever there is an amendment to the comprehensive plan or an area plan, which is also technically an amendment to the comprehensive plan when we add a new section for those policies, that has to be reviewed by you. So Midtown being the most recent example of that. And then there are also a couple of regulations, changes to regulations that must be reviewed by Planning Commission, and those are rezonings and tech changes. So from a, you know, most fundamental point of view, these are the things that Planning Commission will always see and is an ability to sort of apply your values and equity when you make your recommendations to city council on these types of changes. Separate from that, there are the other procedures that staff internally follows. So the first and most frequent being our staff reports. You've already requested that we add an equity section to the staff report. We are actively working on that. I think we have a pretty good draft. There has been quite a lot of discussion amongst ourselves about how to best to do that. It's much easier said than they didn't. So, but we're hoping we're in the home stretch of having a version of that ready to be out in the world. Another example is how we take public comment. So since the pandemic, we've opened the public comment portal for tech changes. So a place for the, an online portal for the public to view the content of exchanges and provide comment. And there has been some work on thinking about how to put the zoning cases on that same public, on that same portal. So in advance of the meeting for people to directly submit comments. And then a third thing that has been mentioned in the past by commissioners was, you know, the accessibility of the commission itself and when and where you meet. I don't know, I don't think staff at this point has great advice, but certainly is a thing that you have control over should you wish to discuss changes to procedures. And then there is the fourth thing, which is not on here, which is the bylaws. Although that's a document that really is about how you meet. Probably not a lot of reason to delve into that. So recently, actions taken by the commission related to this. Commissioner Bennett read a statement in June that someone, I now can't recall, made a motion to post on the websites. We've done that. And asked for issues of equity to be referred to the community of the whole. I think the meeting on the 10th was an example of us trying to do that. So not technically at community of the whole, but, you know, the intent of that was that they, this was a topic of the, that the entire commission wanted to discuss. And then a couple of other things that you've done that are still pending. So again, the, an equity audit of the comp plan, which is going through our sort of project formation process and the staff report, which I already mentioned. And that is the end of my discussion or my presentation. I think, you know, the rest of your time, we'd be happy to answer questions or try to help you answer those questions for yourselves that the Chairperson Winter has asked of us. But that's all the formal, the formal presenting that I have.
Okay, thank you, Ira. Does anyone want to start with a question? Yes, Commissioner McIntosh.
Yeah, so in some of our discussions of rezoning cases, we've talked about rental property versus, you know, homeowners living in their homes. Is there a way for the planning department to show like the percentage of rental units in a certain area? Is that some, is that information you all have easy access to? That we could, you know, just have, like, I guess, within the precinct, the projects in? I don't know where, for that, if that's something that would be possible to show.
Yes, I mean, there's, so there's, the Census Bureau has data on housing tenure, what it's called. Generally would be at the census tract, so rather a large geography. That I think would be the most reliable and consistent way to report that. That definitely has been part of our discussion. So in the, the last time we updated the rezoning staff report, we added the section about housing sustainability, added a couple tables with, and, you know, a couple data sources. We talked about the WACH score, some general narrative questions. We talked about transit accessibility. So that's a similar approach to what we're doing with this. So there, housing tenure was on the list of data sources. And I think for that in particular, we were going to rely on the decennial census, which we should be getting, you know, hopefully in 2021. But then also the American Community Survey. I think it's probably the best, the best data source we can give you for that.
Commissioner Lattman?
It might be unofficial, but I think we could also use, I mean, you, the city tell me, but if we could use other sources like Zillow that has all the rental advertisements. I think we can see a pretty good, it's not perfect because it's only vacancies, but would that be an option for us to kind of gauge?
Potentially. I'm not sure what those services, what their publicly available data is like versus what they charge for. There are certainly lots of other services that collect data of the real estate market that require subscriptions, which we may or may not have. Think we can look into if other departments can provide that type of thing. And there is always also the ownership data that Wake County tax records have. So the way we often try to attempt to figure out the tenure of a particular property is if the address of the, of the site itself, so the actual property, is different than the address of the owner. That's fairly imperfect for all sorts of reasons. You know, if you have the, your property go to a P O box, you know, that might, instead of mail to your house, you could potentially use your house for other stuff that's not residential. So there are, there are different ways. But I think when you're getting to a scale of, you know, what's going to affect a particular, a particular zoning case. So thinking on the, you know, in the mail notice, we're talking about 500 feet, 1,000 feet. Just geography is that small, there is going to be, the data is not going to be great, no matter which source we go with.
I have a question and I don't, well, my question is this. When we're also talking about equity and we're talking about neighborhoods, my concern or something that I've seen is also about income and how that relates to development or areas that are developed or the services or the conditions that are offered. Not trying to be indelicate or insensitive, but I would also like to note that, that as well. Because it seems to, it seems to be tracking as a factor as to what is provided or what is requested in terms of rezoning and then the services around that. And if we're talking about equity, that's one of the main components of trying to provide similar services across town and similar quality of life that is consistent throughout all of the city. So is that something that can be done?
Yes, yeah, I think my answer to that is similar to the first one, which is, you know, the census and the American Community Survey are pretty good sources for that. I mean, unlike physical property, you know, Wake County isn't, other than the tax value of a property, which doesn't necessarily tell you what it costs to live there. You know, there is, they census tracks income, also track a couple of variables about cost of housing in relation to, in relation to income. Wish now I just remember the acronyms, but they track it for renters and for homeowners. You know, HUD has a, has a database that's based on census data, but they get access to the raw data and has a, the database that has income information, also cost burden, which I always think when we're talking about these types of questions is more important, which is like actually how much you spend on where you live. Generally is what people care about. So income is like a, is a proxy or is like, kind of tells you. But, you know, if there is data that actually says this particular household has trouble paying for their housing, like that's more informative, in my opinion. So again, the data like that exists and we are talking and vetting in the department of what we think would be best to use, both in the geography that makes sense and also consistency across zoning cases. So a way to apply that data. to the process that makes the most sense. But yeah, that's definitely also included.
If I could just for a moment, add a little bit more context, and I appreciate Ira's responses there. I think what what staff is is saying is that we can explore ways to provide you with more data. And I've heard a couple of different options. I don't know that we're going to get to the finite detail about how we would provide information today. That's really the the focus of our exploration for how we however, specifically related to the last couple of questions. Staff doesn't have issues with the data. What I would want to commission want to use the last topic about the income related to the services provided in in the surrounding area as it relates to a zoning case. You know, if staff came back and identified a specific area that was devoid of certain services. And the applicant before you in the rezoning case was not going to offer an opportunity for a specific type of service. Does that mean that that the planning commission uses that data very intently in reviewing that case? And so that's where I want to maybe focus our discussion a little bit more, if that's possible.
Okay, yes, Commissioner McIntosh. Oh, yeah. Thanks, Mr. Crane, for bringing up because that's I I guess I think what you might be getting at. And I apologize because obviously I'm not an expert, but is that the limits of, I guess, we're we're making a recommendation to council, but there's a limit on what we can. I guess by state statute, there's limitations on what we can request or or I guess, just, you know, from personal experience with, I know I'm always going back to you know, the sheet rezoning. I know there wasn't a way for us to say, we don't need a gas station. Don't give us a gas station. And that seemed like that wasn't really an option for the planning department either. Could you talk a little bit about kind of the the boundaries of you know, what what the limitations are by by the state on what we can on how we can I don't even know how to how to say it, but you know, it's like, I know there's boundaries and I know I'm probably go outside of them some. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. No, you you framed the question perfectly, you know, what what are the guardrails for the planning commission review through zoning request? So state law tells us that, you know, staff provide analysis. Planning Commission provides a recommendation based on consistency with the adopted comprehensive plan. And staff provides you with a fair amount of information related to not only policies in the plan, but specific land use and other mapping recommendations for the specific parcel or area. So that's the first part of your charge is to determine whether or not you believe the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan or not. The second part of state statute talks about reasonableness and whether or not the request is in the public interest. Now, that statement is pretty specific and it it really makes a difference once the request is sent to the city council, because that's their charge in recommend or in approving or denying a zoning case. So look at the lens of those two things, I think, makes it for a much more robust and transparent process is identifying consistency with the plan and whether or not something's reasonable in the public interest. So what that means is if there is language in the comprehensive plan that talks about, using your example, you know, having a dispersion of gas stations or service stations or auto oriented uses or something like that, you would use that policy as the vehicle for making that type of comment. However, if it's just the desire of the surrounding neighbors, you know, that we don't want a gas station here, or we don't want a drugstore, fill in the blank. It's harder to find policy language to back that up. And so staff's advice to you is is really focus your review based on the policy language in the comprehensive plan.
Commissioner Lattman.
Just to for transparency sake, and I I know I've mentioned this in the past. I am a non-voting board member of the BRCA and so the Blue Ridge Corridor Alliance. And we are actively planning the corridor. Obviously, we'll be looking at the comp plan and that sort of thing, but I just want to make sure that I understand what my limitations are in this kind of engagement, because obviously we'll be, as we're planning out, we're we're wanting to encourage every you know, amendment that's coming through and new policy. So but I want to make sure that I understand what my if I'm going to be in a conflict.
The conflicts, because what you're dealing with are legislative matters and not quasi judicial. The conflicts are set forth, basically, if you have a recognizable, a readily you know, recognizable financial interest in the item. Association with organizations and so forth usually do not trigger that or legislative matters. For quasi judicial, it's different because there you have to be impartial. And so it's there's no requirement of impartiality. You can really be in favor of something before you know it. And so it's it's different there. So it's a legislative matter. Associations are not as big a deal. It's more your financial. Are you going to financially benefit? Are you going to financially be hurt? Which would lead you to vote a certain way.
No, I know that came up with one of the council members, but he lived in the area of Midtown. His homeownership, a conflict of interest in certain areas.
If someone has a very strong belief that the outcome of the rezoning is going to impact their property values, then yes. And so that's, you know, where you have to come down and and decide. But that's going to require some proximity issues and things of that nature to evaluate. There's no it's it's a case by case evaluation. Let me put it that way. There's not a laundry list of things that, yes, this this is a conflict and no, this is is never a conflict. And so I've had conflicts where property owners in proximity to a rezoning. One didn't think it was going to have any impact on them. The other one felt very strongly it was going to have an impact on them. One recused themselves and one did not. It's a different jurisdiction, but same rule applied to them.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure thing.
Commissioner McIntosh.
I have a question going back to some things Mr. Crane was talking about. So you mentioned, you know, hypothetical policy on dispersion of dispersed I'm not sure dispersion of gas stations. I I have the impression there's not currently any policies in the comprehensive plan about concentration of uses. Is that something that potentially could be added to the comprehensive plan?
It's a good question. I don't know that I have immediate command as to whether or not we have policy language about uses and the dispersion in the comprehensive plan. By them saying no, I tend to agree with her. Something we can look into. So in absent that, that certainly would be a way to address it is to identify appropriate policy language to plan that could be used during the analysis of a zoning case.
Yeah, I I second that. I think the there isn't a particular policy that talks about concentration of uses. There is. There are policies about high impact commercial uses, so gas stations and other and bars and their proximity to residential in particular. So, you know, nothing to stop an intersection with four gas stations, one on each corner. But if there were, you know, an R R two zone community with a lot that were for commercial or requested zone commercial, I think that policy would come into play. So there are there are policies that do call out uses in particular by name and where and with where and where they are not appropriate to be.
I I personally think so adding, if we could work on, maybe this is something we could talk about in this committee, but adding some language to the comprehensive plan about dispersion of uses, I think that would be useful. This is another personal example of that same intersection where they wanted to put a gap, you know, the sheets. The next two rezonings were both for grocery stores and, you know, the first grocery store neighbors were pretty happy. And the second grocery store, everyone's looking at it like, why do we need another grocery store? You know, so I think I mean, I think there's a lot of or residents in my neighborhood anyway would be happy for a policy like that.
I think some proprietors might tell you that concentration of uses is good for them. And that's part of their business model.
I'm sure that's true.
You see a lot of things. I mean, I'm from Massachusetts originally, and there are definitely parts of the state where you can stand in the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot and hit another Dunkin' Donuts with a baseball was always the joke. And I did, you know, whatever, they knew that each other existed, but like to be on the same side, like opposite side of the road or whatever. So I I do want to I am easily I used to write housing analyses, so it is very easy to distract me in discussions of the data. So I appreciate Travis bringing me back in from that. But I think part of that discussion and the reason, you know, we're taking what might seem like a long time to put this type of analysis in front of you is not just the sort of nitty gritty of what data do we use and where, but thinking through the policy implications. So like, what would you do with it? Right? So for example, if we provide income on data on household income, like, what does the policy tell you that you should think about that? You know, if an area is low income, does that mean there should be more multifamily because those people generally need housing that's more affordable to them? Or does it mean there shouldn't be because they already have a lot of affordable housing? Like, what's what? What do you do with that? And I think to date, as I mentioned in the presentation, the comp plan doesn't really get into that, unfortunately. It's definitely the type of thing that we're wanting to get policies in place for you. I think all the ultimate goal is that the the equity section of the zoning analysis becomes obsolete because the comp plan itself has all those policies in it and it doesn't need to be analyzed separately. But we're not there yet. And the zoning staff report is something we can change much more quickly than, you know, a year long comp plan update. But it is, I mean, we're we're trying to be thoughtful of not just throwing a bunch of data at you, but data points that are both good and we can get. But then also that you will will help you make a decision and not just be, you know, more pages in the staff report to read.
Commissioner McIntosh.
Does the APA have recommendations on you know, how to use the data that we could, you know, you might direct us to take? Because I mean, obviously, we're not as knowledgeable about this topic as the planning department.
So most of the most of the material I've seen from the APA is more focused on policies and what policies you should have and less about area specific sort of data analysis you should do. I think we've been looking at. So in addition to APA, there are lots of other other agencies in the government that require analysis that I think can be informative. So HUD in particular requires a lot of good stuff from agents from jurisdictions that receive money from them. So definitely considering that, you know, we've been looking at what other communities are doing. There are a lot of communities that are pretty far ahead and have, you know, offices of equity and and have policies like that. A lot of it is, I think, you should have a policy that says this and and do this. And it's rare to get like, look up this table or get this tax information and do this with it. There certainly are examples of where people make indices. So some data data based scoring system for various things. And we're sort of looking through those, and I have invented those myself. So I but again, it without the without the to Travis's point, you know, the point of the task of the planning commission is to review all that stuff with with consistency for the comp plan. So we can, we can do all that. But without doing the work of like, what should the policy be when this type of situation happens? So low income versus high income or low income with lots of multifamily versus high income with no like, what do what do we want to be as a city?
So it kind of sounds like what I'm hearing is this topic, it could be a discussion in this committee to recommend policy that might address how to apply data or or maybe help start putting together tables that would not require, I don't know.
Did you? I'm sorry. I thought I was unmuted. Mind, did you want to add to that or respond?
I I just wanted to. I really appreciate Ira's answer, and I wanted to say that the work that we're doing right now to revise the staff report, we very much see as an interim effort. And so I wanted to emphasize that that once the comprehensive plan is revised, that we anticipate that thematic update would push us back to a place of policy analysis. And in the interim, we're looking for data that we can include that helps give a better picture of the consequences of zoning decisions. And I I see that there are at least two steps. I think Ira has talked and all of you have talked about, well, which data do you include? What's helpful? What's useful? That's very much a first step. I think a second step is thinking through, well, how would that inform your decision? And we wouldn't just present you data with no context. We would come to you with some analysis that says, well, the data suggests this or that, right? And so part of the work that we're doing right now is actually working up some case studies based on the data we've selected to to say, well, you know, to Ira's point, in this in the particular area of a rezoning, the average median income is very low compared to the citywide average. Does that mean there should be more affordable housing or less affordable housing? Right? Like, so what? Like, what? What rational choice should a community that may make based on the data you find? And so part of the work we're trying to do is work through that, evaluate that and provide you with information that actually is there's some clear direction as a result of having considered those figures. And and I think that frankly, it's hard because it you know, it's kind of like the Bible. You can make it say whatever you wanted to if you talk long enough. So to be thoughtful about what we're bringing forward to you. And I think that frankly, is a lot of the slowness on our end is that it is the thought exercise is a tough one.
Yes, Ira.
Oh. Yeah. So one one thing I do want to mention, you know, Commissioner McIntosh asked about if there's any guidance on how to use data. I think what they're every every sort of equity tool that I've seen, including APAs and other developed by other communities is really and the including. So APA does have versions, the Government Alliance on Rural Equity has versions. You know, I think the city of Seattle has invented versions. There are versions out there. But every quote equity tool is really a series of questions that you ask yourself. So like, who is most burdened by this? Who's going to benefit? That type of thing universally across the board. From what I've seen, which is I can't say I've looked at every single one, but I've reviewed them. So I think right now in this, what we're Bynum has called this interim solution, is really thinking more like, well, what data should we use? Do we need to help us answer those questions for you in the staff report? Do we need to help us answer those questions for you in the staff report? So if, if Gare is saying, who is going to be, experience the burden of this, of this request or whatever the change is going to be, like, well, if I'm going to write a paragraph about that like I do about everything else in the staff report, like, what would I, as the planner, like to know? You know, and that is the race and ethnicity of whatever, the census tract or the nearest three census tracts or whatever, income information, that type of thing. So it's, at this stage, I think less about, here's a table of data. Which is very much like what you get with the traffic stuff. You get like trip counts. But, you know, the difference is they have, they have policies about what the trip counts mean to them. So, you know, this many trips is okay, but this many is too much. And they have other policies too. So you never see, you know, the, most of the TIA determination you see are the traffic study determination is trip counts. But there's all sorts of other stuff. There's like fatal crashes, you're completing the third leg of, or the fourth leg of a four-way intersection. They have other policies too. So you see a table, but there's a lot more other thought from many years of transportation engineering. And unfortunately, the equity, there's not a great corollary to the equity. We're sort of building that plane after finding it. So, you know, I don't want to say also that like, data is not useless because it's always going to be necessary. But it's this other piece that I think we'll get to through, hopefully, a public process. I think if you look at what the values that came out of the EDAT study, talking about where we should grow, what those places should look like, is the policy work that I think we're hoping to do citywide, focused more explicitly on race. And the next step is like, how, well, how do, what, what regulations and policies are in place that we need to get to there. And so in this one, we're kind of doing it backwards just from, we, we don't want to wait because obviously this issue is important and urgent. But, you know, has made it kind of tricky. And I'll, I'll stop talking.
Commissioner Hicks, I do see you, but I did want to add one thing with, with the conversation. I do appreciate when we're talking about the stats and everything like that, but I think that issue also is some of the verbiage that is found within the document that can lead to bias and also addressing that. Like, for instance, like neighborhood consistency or what was like neighborhood characteristic or something, something to that, that, some things like that, that should also be addressed as well as stats and percentages and the like, just to make sure that we are hearing it consistently and we are applying it consistently when we're talking about a neighborhood that's being gentrified, let's just say with half a million dollar homes. That's not maintaining neighborhood, neighborhood consistency, but that is, that is a part, it's not applied the same. I guess basically that's what we're seeing when we're looking at various neighborhoods and what is allowed or what is, or how, what is not necessarily brought forward or is not really expounded upon. Commissioner Hicks?
Thank you. And I'm not an expert on this, so bear with me. I'm wondering if when, you know, we're talking about, say, for instance, if we identify an area as low AMI, you know, then, you know, so what, like, what do we do with that information? And I'm wondering if the, the framework or the structure for how this gets reviewed or analyzed, kind of what that is, is it the makeup overall of the city? So for instance, the goal would be to have a mix of AMI in all parts of the city. And so if you're in a part of a city that's a high, much higher than the AMI, the goal in that area would be to combine it with more diverse, you know, housing stock that's affordable. If you're in a lower AMI, maybe the goal is to help make that less of an island and more diverse as well without, without displacing the characteristics or the people that are there. And so rather than it being kind of like, if you, like in traffic, if you meet this threshold, then this is the remediation, that it's more about a matrix who's, which, with the F, with the focus on an overall vision for the city so that we're, we stop, we start to address the fact that we have these striated sections of the city. Is, is that language or approach or framework something that is being used or can be used?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's certainly an approach that I personally have been advocating for when we've been talking about ideas in comprehensive planning. So Bynum has presided over discussions where all of us argue about what we should be doing to, to achieve this goal. And yeah, I'm, I am personally a fan of the sort of relative metrics. So we make a analysis of the city overall, which lets us compare one area to the other. So I used to do fair housing analyses for a living, which is a HUD required document. And they, without getting too detailed, temporarily, before it was repealed, had a requirement to do an opportunity analysis, which was you, it's a bunch of metrics citywide that you aggregate together and basically get a score of neighborhood opportunity, the thinking being that areas of high opportunity, so good school scores, job access. There was a big list of metrics. Should be a focus for increasing affordable housing options. So very similar to the strategy you're talking about, not specifically on those metrics race specific, but that approach. On the other hand, that was always alongside the traditional, well, if you have an area, does that mean you should not, no longer invest in areas that have, you know, that are segregated or have a lot of persons of low income? Like, does that mean we should be putting all of our resources into these other high-opportunity areas to try and even think, you know what I mean? So the answer was always do both. You have to, you know, try to increase the diversity and the opportunity in the areas of high opportunity that might not have seen, you know, affordable housing projects in the past. But that doesn't mean you, you stop investing in areas where people already live that also need resources. But it's always going to be that balancing act. But yeah, I think that is certainly in the mix of, of techniques that we've been talking about.
Okay, out of respect for time, this will be our last question or a comment. Commissioner Hicks?
Actually, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lattman?
If I can sneak in one then, how engaged will the planning department be with specific applicants? And so will you be communicating with the applicant, the various needs that you come across for a particular area, give kind of like the outline, you know, and then do they need to state then how they meet those objectives or how they will plan to accommodate?
So I can answer that, you know, in a perfect world, a policy where we believe like is consistent. If you would like to bring policies, the good column, consistent column. So having that very good structure of policy language in the plan is helpful to us.
All right. Is there anything else anyone else, everyone else would like to share? Or Commissioner McIntosh?
Oh, I just wanted to apologize to Mr. Crane. I think I was kind of misinterpreting when he made a statement about wondering how we would interpret data we were given. I was taking that as, you know, asking us how will we interpret it? And I now, I think I understand what he's saying is the planning department is working on policies to help guide us. Is that more accurate?
Yes. So first of all, I do apologize. The general thrust, we can start, you know, that's on our work plan for the coming year, specifically related to equity in the comprehensive plan. My comment, however, is related to what are you going to do with that information?
Yeah, and I just, so this is also not the planning department drafting these policies. This is going to be, so our work plan for the update is, has a lot to do with the public engagement. And then what, so what we're asking, what we're going to be asking the community and planning commission and other, other boards and commissions, both, you know, right now, we're trying to figure out what we can do, what types of things we should be asking, you know, do we, do we select policies for people to look at? Do we have more general, like what is equitable rally, that type of thing? So it, it's going to be hopefully more of a reflection of what residents and you all and the other boards and commissions and other departments also pretty strongly tell us the reason why it's going to take probably all of 2021 to get that work done. Because the plan right now is not for planning and development staff to write that policy and propose it without doing all that other work.
All right. Let's, yes, Bynum.
I just wanted to note that the next regular meeting date of the committee is January 19th at 10:00 AM. The chair winner has asked us to bring information about history of land use patterns in the city, demographics and rezoning metrics from the past 12 months. We just wanted to articulate that for staff and for the committee so that we're all on the same page about what to expect.
Jennifer, Commissioner Lattman, you're saying something, but I don't know what it is.
10:00 AM, correct? On the thinking? Okay, thanks.
Okay. Well, everyone, thank you for coming. Ira, thank you for your presentation, but I'm thank you for the, the wrap-up and preparing us for the next meeting. I appreciate your time and I will see you in January. Until then, Happy New Year.
Happy holidays.